Oh, it's great to see everybody. Come on in, come on in, welcome home. Very blessed, aren't we? Well, let's see who we've got. So some people who might not be chiming in on Facebook because they're already here. Paul is always chiming in, NetNet's always chiming in, Steve's always chiming in, Valerie's always chiming in, Kathy's always chiming in. These folks, if they chime in, that means they're getting a double dose tonight. They're Facebooking and they're in person here at the church. So there's nothing wrong with a double dose when it comes to church. Nothing wrong at all. There you go. But it's great to see you all. It's great to be with you tonight. Hope everybody's had a good day. It's great to see everybody tonight. Here's the fun thing. So tonight, prior to us starting in here, I decided to record a little preview promo video for Facebook Live, and then I forgot to post it. So the promo video is going to come after this probably. Oh, there. How do I get the point, man? This is great. So anyways, Cliff and Jill, y'all are watching from home. Ms. Mary and Ms. Judy, Nick, Ann Owens, let's see, Annette Harton. I think Annette and Mark were here last week, but they might not be able to be here tonight. I'm going to try to keep up with folks on Facebook Live on my phone and also keep up with you all, but there is a 20-second delay, so if I repeat myself, just let me know. If I repeat myself, just let me know. It's great to see everybody. If I repeat myself, let me know. All right, well, praise the Lord for you being here. It has been one of those times, we have talked and talked and just prayed and prayed and thought about, you know, what do we do? You know, we open up church, we have church on Sunday mornings, we have church on Wednesday nights now. But still, we're wondering, you know, how people feel, what are people's thoughts? So next Wednesday night, we hope you'll come to our church, Quarterly Church Family Meeting. We can open up the Welcome Center as well, just so that everybody has plenty of room for social distancing. But we will not be posting that Church Family Meeting on Facebook, we will not be recording it or having it live or anything else. So you will have to be here in person, but part of that meeting is just an open discussion. I'll lead the discussion, just as we think about how to move forward during, I don't know what you all call it. I call it a crazy time. It's just, it's nothing, it's like nothing ever before, in my opinion, as far as with where we are technology-wise. So as far as announcements go, if you're here tonight through social media or in person, we're doing our Wednesday night book study called Evangelism: How the Whole Church Speaks of Jesus, and the thrust of this is how we speak of Jesus together as the people of God. Esther Sermon Series, Round Two will be coming Sunday morning. And a week from tonight, I mentioned it just a little bit earlier, is our Church Family Meeting with Church and Corporation, Deacon Election, Worship Pastor Job Description. We've got a little something with Pastor Jeff we're going to talk about, and then we're going to have open discussion as well. Ms. Jan and Boone is with us, the Stricklands, the Slaters, the Stricklands again, they can't get enough, and then Donna Vig and Cleo Naria. It's good to see you guys as well. Also, coming in August is our new member class, Talk by Three Pastors, so that'd be cool. And then coming tomorrow, beginning tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. are the Ladies' Bible Studies. And last but not least, our Giving God's Way special offering is coming up on August the 30th. We've been doing this for years now, where we have a special emphasis, and we have the Annie Armstrong Easter Offering at Easter. We have the Lottie and Christmas Offering, when? At Christmas time. And this is a good middle-of-the-year time to give to reduce our debt, and that's been going on for quite a while, and we're very blessed. Everyone's always been very giving. Rachel Gilpin, it's good to see you as well. All right, so let's begin tonight with a word of prayer, and then we'll move forward. Father, thank you for your goodness, your grace, your love, your mercy. Praise you for your protection, provision, and watch care. We're thankful that you are sovereign and providential. We thank you, Lord, that any and all things that you start, you bring to completion, fulfillment, fruition. Lord, we thank you for your word, that it is truth without any mixture of error. We thank you for the gift of the Holy Spirit. We thank you for discernment, for the fruit of the Spirit, the filling and the leadership of your Spirit. Father, thank you for the gift and the power of prayer. Thank you that we're able to lift up one another and praise your name through this wonderful, joyous chore called prayer. Help us to remember, Lord, when we pray, we're praying to you and not to others. We don't pray to convince someone of our prayers, we don't pray to convince you of our prayers, we don't pray to convince people of our spirituality. We just open up and pour our hearts out to you, Lord, and we thank you for that. Father, I pray you continue blessings upon the church, strength and health, and thank you, Lord, for being such an awesome God. For it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen. Amen and amen. Well, let's see, did we pick up anybody during the prayer time? Uh, let's see, no. All right, Bubba and Lori Wise are here, so praise the Lord for that. If you have your prayer guide tonight with you, or if you got the email, was it yesterday, NetNet, that you sent that out?
Uh, I think it was today.
It was today? Okay. But hopefully you got that by email, or you have it. Oh, wait, there's more humans coming in the building. Want to give a big round of applause, just getting a big welcome shout-out to some of our members who have forsaken coming to church for about two or three weeks in a row. Welcome, Bill and Katie, we're so glad to have you guys back. It is great to see you. And good to see Betty and Tom Moose with us as well online. So when we come to our prayer guide tonight, I want to continue to lift up those who have had or are having surgery coming up. Someone in the congregation named Christie, her surgery was today. Someone in the congregation named Gail, her surgery was earlier in the week. So we're praying for you all, we love you and we miss you during your time of healing. Also, Jan had surgery recently, we're praying for her. And then we have members of our church who are going through treatments, so we want to continue to pray for Joyce. And her treatment, everything's going really well for her, so we praise the Lord. And then Heather, Heather's doing, I think, fairly well, but has had a real tough time. We want to continue to lift up Heather as well. As always, we want to be praying for our partners in missions, we want to be praying for our shut-ins, our military and first responders, and some who are on our prayer list who maybe are not members, but I know the family of Ms. Felicitus, they've had a real tough time. Very faithful attenders of our church, and she's got a lot of health issues, and so we want to lift up that family as they're struggling with what to do and how to provide the best care for her as well. It's good to see the Currys also, praise the Lord for you guys, glad you guys are here. So those are the folks that we're going to be praying about and praying for tonight. As far as praising the Lord, I'm going to repeat it so everybody on social media can hear it, but I just want to begin by praising the Lord for everything that he has taught us and every way that he has shaped us through an unusual first half of the year. You know, we can get mad about stuff, we can complain and cry about stuff, and we can find the good in it. And God always is always working things together for good on our behalf and for his glory, so I praise him for that. Somebody else have a praise report? A word of praise. Kathy?
Last week, I answered a prayer from my sister Martha, the blood transfusion, she's had that done, and she just feels so much better.
Amen.
She still has a few more tests to go, but she's like, and she feels really a lot.
Amen. So we have an answered prayer from Martha, so that's awesome, and it's good to see the house family and Ms. Deanna connecting with us tonight online. Somebody else with a praise? Katie?
I had a stress test yesterday, and everything went great.
Awesome, you are stress-free. Well, maybe not that, but that's good. I mean, but it is de-stressing when you get a good report. Yeah, I mean, when you have something done and you're concerned, absolutely, absolutely. So praise the Lord for that good report. Somebody else? Somebody else with a word of praise? Okay, Valerie, then David.
I'm praying for Destiny.
Yeah. Somebody said, can we share that? I'm like, put it on Facebook, I'm thinking so. Yeah, what a blessing. And we're praying for Robbie and Destiny for that pregnancy. And... A good report. But David and I were talking, and Paula heard the testimony that they've had all along. It's been great. Praise the Lord. And maybe they'll watch this or are watching, so, cool. Okay, David, you had one?
I'd like to praise the Lord for his love, his grace, his mercy, and his patience with me each day. I'd like to praise him because he is the King of kings and Lord of lords. He's my, he's our Creator and Sustainer and Provider. Each day, he reveals himself in so many different ways in our business and the testimony that we can share with people each day. So I praise the Lord for that. I praise the Lord for the salvation of my children, all of my children, and my grandchildren. I want to thank the Lord for that, because as times go on through this world we live in, we're not here, we're here, but we're, this is not our home, and we can, this is our time to testify. And through this time, as you said earlier, God gets the glory for everything that happens, and this is for our gain and his glory. Even though we don't see it, and we don't like it, I just praise him for it. Praise him each day that we get to worship him.
David's reminded us of a lot of theological truths about God, his provision, his grace, and his mercy, and his love, and given us a powerful testimony of God's working in his life. And the thing is, he's working in all of our lives. We need to make certain that we take the time and recognize it, identify it, and then turn it over to him in praise. Amen. Yeah, anybody else? Denny?
I haven't got to stand up in a while.
Yeah.
Been so much. Good to be back with you guys, love you, missed you so much. Just, it's not right Wednesday night without going to church, that's always true. Add to what David was saying, which he covered it all so well. When, in Matthew 6:27-34, two verses in that one chapter, God tells us not to worry. Don't worry, don't worry. He's got this under control, and I don't worry. But when I get concerned about some things, and I see some things about what's happening in the world out here, and how some people want to take this country, I just have to go back and remind myself of those two verses, and remind myself that God is still on the throne and in control, and I praise him for that.
Amen. Denny's praising the Lord for a lot as well, just for God's working in his life and our lives, and thankful. I read something recently, and it was thankful first for our freedom in Christ, because that's our identity. But then the place that God has placed us to enjoy our identity is also a free place, the country that he's given us to live in. And so we have a lot of freedoms to be thankful for that a lot of people don't have. And of course, the most important is the freedom in Christ that we enjoy. Okay? Awesome. So it's good, we've got Robert Shipton from Philadelphia watching us. Oh, Christie Ray's watching, it's good to see you, Christie. Getting a double dose, that's awesome. Anybody else with a praise report? I told Pastor Jeff and the staff, I was like, you know, last week, there was very few people in here, and it was the first week that I hadn't done this, and I missed the interaction of people, the Facebook, seeing people, you know? And I told Pastor Jeff, I was like, man, I missed being at home. And I didn't miss being at home, because I'm like, Denny, I want to be here, but I missed the interaction from the social media audience. And so I decided to pull it up tonight, so now I've got both, the best of both worlds, and I feel good about this, Pastor Jeff. This is much better than I felt last week. So praise the Lord, we've got about 32 people watching online and close to 30 people in the building, so I'm really excited about the different venues, and thank you for everybody in the building, watching on Facebook as well, to bump those numbers up, I appreciate that. So those are our praise reports, very thankful to hear from you all as the people of God. And then we've also discussed our prayer requests, so let's go to the Lord. And there's Ms. Joyce logged in, and Brandy, our family from Tennessee, watching as well. So let's pray. Father, we are so delighted to be able to come to you praising you. And Lord, certainly you know, obviously you've always known, but when you created, Lord, you created us with this need for fellowship. When you established the church, you created the church with this inherent need to assemble together. So Lord, we thank you that we have been able, through the internet, to be able to connect. And now, Lord, being able to be in the building on both Sunday and Wednesday, we're very thankful. Thankful that we can connect in person and that we can connect through social media. So even though there's a lot of stuff that we wish wasn't going on, Lord, there's a lot of good going on, and we give you the praise. Father, we lift up all these meetings and these events that we're going to be having, Lord, even though they're not near as many as we usually have, thank you for them. Thank you for the opportunities, thank you for the giving of your people, for the attendance of your people. Father, we lift up tonight those who are military and first responders. We pray for them for safety and protection, for our military, for firemen, EMTs, paramedics, police, any person, any kind of field that is serving and/or protecting, Lord, we thank you for them and pray for them. And Father, we lift up our shut-ins, those who are probably getting more less contact than anybody else, especially if they don't have social media. We pray for your comfort and your peace for them, and not just for them, but also many in our congregation who just don't have a comfort level to get out at this point, Lord. And there's so many unknowns, there's so many variables, there's... We don't understand, Lord. But Father, I would say the things that are the most important, we do understand. We thank you that through your Holy Spirit, we can have a great understanding of the Word of God, and we thank you for that, Lord. Thank you for our personal relationship with you through your Son, Jesus. Father, tonight, we lift up our partnerships, those on the mission field, serving you in different places. Pray for them, for their health and their strength. And Lord, we lift up to you those on our prayer list that are struggling and hurting. We have so many who are hurting, struggling with cancer, and we pray for those. Lord, we pray specifically tonight for Tracy and for Joyce and for Heather. Please, Lord, in the name of Jesus, touch them.
Yes, and heal them, Father.
And Father, for the family of Ms. Felicitus, Lord, give them great strength and comfort. Father, we pray for our country, for the leaders of our country. Lord, we would pray for love instead of hate, unity instead of division, good instead of evil, light instead of darkness, peace instead of fighting. Lord, we would pray for the gospel to go forth in power, transforming lives all over this country, all over this world, Lord. Father, we thank you for this time that we have tonight to pray and to praise, for it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen. Again, you can pick these up at the church if you're here, or if not, then those are emailed out prior to our Wednesday night service, and if you want to get involved in that email, all you've got to do is call the church office or email the church office, and they'll get you on the list. Hey, Ms. Gail, we hope you're healing up from your recent procedure as well. So we're in Chapter 2 of the book entitled Evangelism. It's How the Whole Church Speaks of Jesus. And in Chapter 2, we're working through what's called a culture of evangelism. And he begins on page 41 with his letter to the Philippians by the Apostle Paul. He says, "I hold you in my heart, for you are all partakers with me of grace, both in my imprisonment and the defense and confirmation of the gospel; for God is my witness how I yearn for you all with the affection of Christ Jesus." You know, as the people of God, created for community, we should have genuinely loving affections for others. And he's really going to get it. I was really challenged by the reading for this week, the second half of the chapter, and I don't want to say anything out of order, so I'll wait until we get to those areas. Talks about a culture of evangelism, and he began on page 48 by saying, "A culture motivated by love for Jesus and his gospel." Number two, a culture that is confident in the gospel. He uses Romans 1:16, "For I am not ashamed of the gospel, for it is the power of God unto salvation." Number three, a culture that understands the danger of entertainment. That was a good one. And then on page four, and that's, I'm sorry, number four, page 51, that's where we'll start for tonight. In 2 Corinthians 5:16, the first part, he says, "From now on therefore we regard no one according to the flesh." Now, if we go back and look at this book, this book was written in 2014. This book's out of date already. Six years old, right? Listen to this statement. "How easy it is to adopt the culture of the world and regard people based on sex, race, or other superficial views." Wow, that's something. I mean, talk about applicable to today. He says, "We tend to forget that those around us are flesh and blood people with real hurts, dreams, struggles, and loves." We've probably all seen something on the TV, whether it was a report about the coronavirus blaming someone or some group or whatever, or we've seen someone on TV destroying something or hurting someone else. We've all seen these images, right, on TV or social media? We've seen them, so let's not act like we haven't. And how many of us have gotten angry, a little bit frustrated, like mad, about some of the things that we've seen? And we might have commented, we probably told somebody else, we might have even posted something about it. When I read this, I was very much convicted. Now, the Bible says, "Be angry and sin not," not a problem for Jesus. Big problem for me sometimes, right? To be angry, but to not let that cross any lines, that's a tough area. We can, through the Holy Spirit. But it says, "We tend to forget that those around us are flesh and blood people with real hurts, dreams, struggles, and loves." And I thought, whenever we see these things, or hear these things, or view these things, or experience these things, are we, is love one of the first things that comes to mind? Well, that was challenging and convicting to me when I read this, because it's so easy for us to, whenever we feel persecuted, or whenever we feel that things just aren't right, or things shouldn't be happening, and this is just not right, and I can't believe this is going on in the world, or in America, or whatever, and yet our first response in Christ should always be love. He says, "We don't always see through the..." Well, he says, "We should not see them through the eyes of the world like we used to, but instead we see them through the eyes of God as the people who need hope." And we know that the only hope that anybody's going to have is in Christ, the only lasting slash genuine hope. Says, "Paul means for us to have a gospel view of people, so that we see people as beautiful, valuable creatures made in the image of God. Each and every one of us carries God's mark. That is why Christians believe all people have dignity, worth, and value." For some, that's going to be a challenge, because for some, they don't believe that everyone has dignity, worth, and value. And so that's a convicting statement, that we need to get right with that. Says, "At the same time, we recognize that every person is fallen, sinful, and separate from God. We've all twisted the image of God. That's why Christians are not enamored with people. But in a culture of evangelism, most of all, we're mindful of what people can become. We see what God can do in someone's life. Yeah, that person might do this, that person might be there, but with the gospel, all of that can change. Didn't it happen to you? Right? I mean, I think part of the reason we get mad, and sometimes we see people act the way they do, because we see ourselves, you know, sometimes. He says, "I long to be with Christians who remember people's separation from God. Most of all, I long for a culture that remembers what people can become through the gospel." "But such were you," Paul said, "that you were washed, that you were justified, that you were sanctified." Number five, what is a culture of evangelism? A culture of evangelism is a culture that pulls together as one. "I thank my God in all my remembrance of you always and every prayer of mine for you all, making mention or making my prayer with joy because of your partnership in the gospel from the first day until now." You know, so many times, I think the church has gone forth with, you know, one person or a pastor, or a group of three, or a group of five, or maybe a group of 10 that might gather and go out to do evangelism. Yet, a culture of evangelism is a partnership. We see ourselves together for the gospel, everyone pulling together for the gospel, everyone being on the same page with the gospel. The goal is for us all to pull in the same direction. There's an understanding that everyone is engaged. I mean, we've all heard it, all pastors have heard it. Well, evangelism is not my gift. Well, that, when you hear that, that's just someone saying, "I don't want to do evangelism." I mean, very few have the gift, if you would, of an evangelist, but all are called to share the gospel. All Christians are called to share their faith as a point of faithfulness, not as a point of your gift. Our call is to be obedient. He says, "I long for a culture where we are all working together toward the goal of being witnesses for Christ." Number six, a culture of evangelism is a culture in which people teach one another. 1 Peter 3:15, "Be always being prepared to make an offense to anyone who asks for a reason for the hope that is in you." 2 Timothy 1:13, "Follow the pattern of sound words that you have heard from me in the faith and love that are in Christ Jesus." Peter instructs us to be ready to share reasons and answers for the hope within us. Now, to be able to do this, we need training, and we need to use that training. I mean, we should be receiving training. I mean, we should be receiving training on Sunday mornings in worship. You're receiving Bible instruction, Bible training, right? How to live for the glory of God. And that involves sharing the gospel. Used to, back when, what was that thing we used to do? Sunday School? Yeah, back when we did Sunday School. That's training, right? It's instruction in the Word, instruction in living. And he talks about the opportunity to sit down with people and share the gospel, urging people, you know, to be converted. Says, "In a culture of evangelism, members teach one another the kind of things we looked at in the previous chapter. What is evangelism? What is the gospel? What is true conversion? In a culture of evangelism, people carefully teach one another how to share their faith in a biblical way." Number seven, a culture that models evangelism. Paul wrote to Timothy, "What you've heard from me in the presence of many witnesses, entrust to faithful men who will be able to teach others also." 2 Timothy 2, verse two. Says, "When we get evangelism right, new believers have a zeal that a lot of times older Christians lose." Not only that, but a lot of times, they have more contacts with lost people too, right? I mean, most lost people don't hang out with much Christians. Lost people typically hang out with lost people, right? And so, a new Christian, someone who was just recently lost, but now they're saved, they have a lot more contacts, and they have a lot more passion. So, I mean, we need to be in the process of hanging out with new believers. It's a very ripe mission field for the gospel. Let's see. Oh, and he talks about balance, because he says, "With the older Christians, even though they might not have the zeal to contact, they have the spiritual inside knowledge. They have the doctrine. They have the theology. And then you marry those together. It's a beautiful thing." Number eight, a culture in which people who are sharing their faith are celebrated. In Philippians 2:19-22, says, "I hope in the Lord Jesus to send Timothy to you, so that I may be cheered by news of you; for I have no one like him who will be generally concerned for your welfare; for they all seek their own interest, not those of Jesus Christ. But you know Timothy's proved your worth, how a son and a father he has served with me in the gospel." Paul honors Timothy for his work in the gospel. But he doesn't, you know, put Timothy up on a pedestal and act like he is the only one who's doing it right, or he is the only one who has the gift of evangelism. It's huge to cultivate a culture of evangelism, to make mention of people who are sharing their faith. Says, "I yearn to be in a church where when evangelistic attempts, where even evangelistic attempts are challenged, even if it doesn't lead to a gospel conversation, even if it doesn't lead to a conversion, evangelistic failure, he says, is better than not trying evangelism at all." It's just the fact that celebrate somebody's faithfulness in sharing the gospel. I mean, we can't save anybody anyway, right? I mean, I know of churches, I know of pastors. I know of pastors who have gotten rid of staff members. I know of churches who have gotten rid of pastors. I know of churches that have split, become disgruntled, because people didn't get saved under someone's ministry. Well, you talk about putting a lot on someone's shoulders. Only God can convert and quicken the soul. And to even act like we can somehow author that is, well, it's heresy, first of all. But it's impractical, and it puts a huge amount of weight. It's a false expectation. It's unrealistic. Because we have to share, but then the results are up to the Lord, right? So, we're not responsible for the salvation. We're responsible for sharing the good news. Number nine, a culture that knows how to affirm and celebrate new life. Says, "We always thank God, the Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, when we pray for you, since we heard of your faith in Christ, just as you learned it from Epaphras, our beloved fellow servant, Colossians 1:3-4, in verse seven." Paul knew how to affirm new believers. He celebrated their conversion, but he kept his focus on Christ. He didn't elevate them inappropriately, but he didn't ignore them either. A culture of evangelism celebrates new life in Christ in the right way. I was in a church one time, and this person, you know, it was like a one... They showed up at one service, and they walked the aisle, prayed a prayer, and, you know, it wasn't long after, this person got up and shared their testimony. Everybody made the biggest deal about it, and this person got up and shared their testimony. And it was like forty-five minutes of vile, evil living. It was just awful. All the things this person had done. It was like a thirty-second gospel, and that was it. But everybody in the church made this huge ordeal out of this person. And after a month, the person was never to be seen again. So, there has to be balance. You want to celebrate what God's done in someone's life, but you also have to kind of watch to see over time if the fruit is genuine, if the conversion is real in it. That leads to the, I think, to the last one, but I'll wait a few minutes. Oh, no, it's right here. It's right here. Yeah. It's the hallelujah and we'll see response. We say hallelujah because true conversion is the best thing you can... If somebody gets saved, that's the best news in the world. So, we say, "Praise the Lord for that," but then we say, "We'll see." Because you don't know if that conversion is genuine. You have to wait over time and see. It says, "The most important check is threefold." I love this. "A good understanding of the gospel, a changed life, and a long-term walk with Christ." Those are the three things you should look for. That's really, really good information there. Number ten, a culture doing ministry that feels risky and dangerous. Philippians 1:12-13, "I want you to know, brothers, that what has happened to me has really served to advance the gospel, so that it has become known throughout the whole Imperial Guard and to all the rest of my imprisonment is for Christ." As we see in 2 Corinthians 10:5, Paul saw the Christian life as waging war on thoughts opposed to God. "We destroy arguments and every lofty opinion raised against the knowledge of God, and take every thought captive to the obedience of Christ." This is risky. The world doesn't like to have its thoughts challenged. I mean, especially now, right? Especially, especially now. Are we willing to do risky evangelism? Says, "I long for a culture of evangelism that's risky in the sense that we're confronting culture." Most of that means disregarding what people think of us, and disregarding whatever might be politically correct at any given time. Says, "We should all think through ways we can take risks in our particular context." Don't need a martyr complex. Says, "A funny thing happens when we take risks. We become dangerous, dangerous to those people who have their minds set against God." In Philippians, Paul says, "The gospel had become known among the Imperial Guard." And when he closes out the book, he writes, "All the saints greet you, especially those of Caesar's household." Isn't that incredible? Guards, members of Caesar's very own household had come to know the gospel. That is risky evangelism. That's dangerous. When you see people in political or that type of leadership situation coming to know Christ is huge. Now, it's interesting, he concludes his top ten list with number eleven. "A culture that understands that the church is the chosen best method of evangelism." Acts 2:46-47, "Day by day, attending the temple together and breaking bread in their homes, they received their food with glad and generous hearts, praising God and having favor with all the people, and the Lord added to their number day by day those who were being saved." He says, "Okay, I know I said ten things, but there's one more, one that has run through all the other ten. I long for a church that understands that it, the local church, is the chosen best method, best method, best method of evangelism." He says, "I long for a church where Christians are so in love with Jesus that when they go about the regular time of worship, they become an image of the gospel. I long for a church that disarms with love, not entertainment, and lives out countercultural confidence in the power of the gospel. I long for a church where the greatest celebrations happen over those who share their faith, and the heroes are those who risk their reputations to evangelize. The best outreach happens in a culture of evangelism inside a healthy church." And he talks about some things that are coming up in the next chapter. So, in two weeks, Lord willing, we'll be launching in chapter number three. So, there's a lot of great information in his top ten slash eleven list. And, you know, considering that, and then also considering, you know, where we are with the coronavirus and everything, you know, I'm just going to repeat some information, because some of you, you know, you keep up with this more than I am. I just get these alerts or whatever, but obviously, the coronavirus is supposedly, it seems, you know, increasing in a lot of states. And I think deaths are maybe on their way back up as a result of the coronavirus and all of these things. And we have, you know, some people who are on one side or on the other, just with different beliefs about that, and about how to treat it, how to protect from it. Shawn sent me a link to the staff. It was a really good link about masks. And, you know, it was a really, I think it, kind of like what I shared at the beginning about seeing people and just having love for them. But it talked about how we're divided in everything right now. The people who wear masks look down on the people who don't. The people who don't look down on the people who do. It's like, why can't you just do what you're supposed to do? This says, "Why don't you just have faith?" You know, and we don't have to be divided on everything. And we can still disagree about some things, right? And still represent the gospel. And then Jill sent a link to a really good article about church attendance. And I don't worry about the number of people who come. I've never worried about that. If you're not a member of our church or haven't been here, we don't have these signs posted in different places of the church that tells how many people came to church, how many people read the Bible, how many people came to Sunday School. We never had those signs, how much money was given, all that. We don't have signs, you know, that post all that. But for me personally, I struggle with just not seeing everybody that I used to see. No, I mean, it's not about the number of people. It's about the people, people. And the article mentioned, you know, not freaking out about it, and I'm not, but we should be concerned about it. I mean, it's not like, was it a couple, several years ago, hurricane or something, August? We missed a Sunday or two, I think. We missed a Sunday or two for snow ice situations, like real snow and ice. Not like when they're calling for snow, and they shut the Virginia public school systems down three days ahead of time. We're not talking about that. But when there was actual ice and snow and people, it was dangerous for people. We closed, and I hated to do that, but that was a week, maybe two, and you knew we were coming right back. But the concern that I have, and that we should all have, like all of us, is months have gone by. And, you know, they talk about the new normal with all this other stuff. You know, my concern is that there's this new perspective on doing church at the house. You know, I want you to be safe, and I want you to feel safe. I don't want you to do something that's going to make you, you know, miserable and fear and all of that. But my concern is that when you stay at home for two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight months... And I'm not saying you don't have a valid excuse. I'm not doing that at all. I'm not judging you for staying at home, anybody for staying at home. What I'm saying is that if it becomes a habit, which it is a habit right now. It is. I mean, it just is. It's forced upon you, but it's a habit, right? But when things are finally open and in the clear, my concern is, for how many people are they going to go back? Or are they going to stay where they are? I mean, church in your gyms, on the couch, that's pretty convenient, you know? Hey, I can actually go play around the golf and watch the pastor while I'm playing golf, you know? On the boat, or what? I mean, so, my concern is, is will people, whenever, whatever lives, and there is a freedom, you know, a freedom from fear of what might happen by gathering in public, how many will actually come back? And when I say, "How many?" I'm not worried about the numbers. I'm worried about my people. Are any of us, will any of you, you out there, Facebook world, any members of Alexander choose to do church at home when you don't have to? That's a concern I have. And, you know, I want to set you up to thrive and succeed. I don't want us to set ourselves up for failure, but right now, because of our limitations, and because of requirements and restrictions, and because, I mean, honestly, do we really know that much more about coronavirus now than we did in February? Probably not. We might even know less. Who knows? All the things that they said, half of them don't even apply. So, and then now there's new stuff. So, I mean, we just don't know. But I don't want you to have a fear of the unknown. But I'm talking about just the gathering together of God's people. That's a concern. So, if you're able, next Wednesday night, I mean, if you need to put on a full-on body suit just so you feel comfortable to sit in the very back, so you can hear, I mean, I don't want you to be uncomfortable, but I'd love you to be able to hear our discussion next Wednesday night at our church family meeting to talk about, what do we do for Sunday School? What do we do for childcare, for nursery? What do we do for Sunday night? What do we do for Wednesday night? I don't know. I don't know. When are we going to get to the point to where we feel comfortable coming back to church? And, you know, like for me, last week, I was very disappointed, because I thought, man, Wednesday night is, oh, people, woo-hoo! It was like eight of us here, you know? And, oh, man, I thought there'd be like at least thirty or forty people, and there's more people here tonight, and I'm thankful. Again, it's not about the numbers, but why aren't people coming? And do we even need to have it if nobody? I don't know. You know what I'm saying? This has been the most "I don't know" time of my life. It's like I knew more as a teenager. Oh, I knew I knew more as a teenager. But I mean, really, I mean, we just don't know. And it's a big struggle being your pastor, and for us as pastors, because we can't really make any decisions. We can't really, you know, do a whole lot. And then when we do, we're like, dikes, I don't know. Like last week, should we have done this on Wednesday night? I don't know. Pastor Jeff did a Sunday School. Should he have done that? I don't know. We don't know anything much, but we know Jesus. But as far as the what's going on practically in our culture today, it's like, ah. So anyways, just wanted to share those things, just to get your, hopefully get you thinking about, you know, your thoughts, sharing those, and who knows what we'll be doing, what we'll be allowed to do, what we should do, what we can't do. But I love you all, and I love Alexander Rapids Church. And I just don't want people to quit Alexander Rapids Church. So, tonight, about thirty people in the building, thirty, thirty-plus people on social media. I'm excited, so. Love you all. So thankful that you were here tonight. We're going to pray, and then we'll be dismissed. Father, I say we don't know a whole lot, but Lord, you know what I'm talking about. I pray that everybody else does. Lord, we know so much about you and your Word. And Father, we know so little about just what's going on around us and what the future holds. We're so thankful that you hold the future. And I pray that you'd help me, help us to trust you, and help us not to label, not to castigate, not to judge if it's about skin color, or about coming to church in person or not, or wearing a mask or not. Lord, help us not to be judgy. Help us, Lord, to just be loving and kind. That we would win people over with our testimony of love, your gospel for your glory through the power of your Holy Spirit. Father, bless this church to be strong and healthy. Never have we or any other church in this generation faced such a challenge. Help us to be faithful, for it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen. Amen. All right, folks? Amen. All right, folks? Great to see you guys. Happy July. Can't believe it's July. It's not just July, I mean, we're in the what? The throes of the second week? All right.